Spell your first name. With Acadians, of course, it's a capital B, so it's a capital L cap E, capital B, L A N C. And the Commissioner is well aware of the spelling of Acadian names. Do you swear that the testimony you're about to give is the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth? Yes, I do swear. Thank you.
Minister LeBlanc, do you recall being interviewed by the Commission Council on February 22nd, 2024?
I do.
Right, and if I could ask that W I T sixty-five be called up? Minister, this is a summary of the publicly disposable information from that interview. Have you had a chance to review the summary?
Yes, I have.
And is it accurate?
It is.
And will you adopt it as part of your evidence before the Commission?
I will.
Thank you. And next, if we could go to W I T fifty-two. This is a summary, Minister, of your in-camera examination. Have you had an opportunity to review this summary?
Yes, I have.
And is it accurate?
Yes, it is.
And will you adopt it as part of your evidence before the Commission?
I will.
Thank you. You've had a number of roles in government, a number of roles in Cabinet. I will try and take you through what I understand your various positions have been since approximately August of 2018, and please correct me if I get any of this wrong. I understand that in August of 2018, you were appointed Minister of Intergovernmental Affairs, and you held that position until 2019. Is that right?
Yes.
And after the election in 2019, you were appointed President of what was then the Queen's Privy Council for Canada, which included responsibilities for democratic institutions.
That's correct.
In the summer of 2020, you were appointed Minister of Intergovernmental Affairs, and you served in those offices as Minister of Intergovernmental Affairs and with responsibility for democratic institutions until the 2021 election.
That's right.
All right, and after the 2021 election, you were appointed Minister of Intergovernmental Affairs and retained responsibility for democratic institutions.
That's right, and I had the infrastructure and communities portfolio attached as well.
Thank you for that addition. And in 2023, you were appointed Minister of Public Safety, Democratic Institutions, and Intergovernmental Affairs.
That's right.
All right. Glad I didn't leave any of the, you have the record for longest title, I think.
I have a hard time keeping a job.
Given the scope of this stage of the proceedings, I'll focus my questions today primarily on your responsibilities in relation to democratic institutions. Can you describe your role or mandate in relation to that portfolio?
Les institutions démocratiques. Democratic institutions are secretariat within the Privy Council to, and they develop policies, consider legislative changes that may be needed to support the capacity of Canadians to hold free and fair elections. And it's a public policy function. And of course, Elections Canada is an independent agency and looks after the operations. But it's a way that the government and the executive interact with the elections apparatus in Canada. Thank you. I would ask my questions in English.
Language of your choice. Excuse me, we heard this morning from your colleague, Minister Gould, about her work in developing the plan to protect democracy. Did your responsibilities in relation to democratic institutions include reviewing or updating that plan?
Yes, they did. She was the minister in the lead-up to the 2019 general election. I remember as a minister her coming to Cabinet with that with that plan. I remember conversations with her as a colleague around that work. And after the 2019 election, when I took over that responsibility, one of the mandates that I got was to review the, how the plan had worked in the 2019 election and come back to Cabinet with any suggested changes or adjustments for the upcoming election. We were then in a minority parliament, so we wanted to have those measures in place.
And did part of that include reviewing what we've heard referred to as the Judd Report, the May 2020 assessment on the critical election incident public protocol?
Yes, it did. That was a deliberate decision made by the government to have an independent review by a very senior public servant, former Deputy Minister, Director of the, of CSIS. So once we got Mr. Judd's report, I worked with the senior officials at the Privy Council office to make any adjustments that Mr. Judd recommended. We also had the benefit of a National Security and Intelligence Committee of Parliamentarians report. So that work went into the sort of second version or 2.0 version of what Karina Gould had had taken to Cabinet two years previously.
Thank you. And just for the benefit of the participants, the Judd Report can be found at CAN900. We don't need to bring it up. I would ask the court operator to bring up COM48. And this is a report entitled Countering an Evolving Threat that I think, Minister, you'll be quite familiar with. I realize it was produced sometime later. But if we could just go to page twenty of that document. It contains a review of different recommendations that have been made by NSIA, or, excuse me, some of the entities that we've listed this morning, including the Judd Report. You mentioned, Minister, that you adopted or recommended adopting a number of the recommendations made by, made in that report. One recommendation, I understand, that was not implemented. If we just scroll down a bit on this page, what's listed as number two, that the protocol would cover the pre-writ period. Can you explain why that particular recommendation was not implemented?
So that would have been based on advice that I would have received from senior officials at the Privy Council Office. In a context where we're not in an election period, where writ hasn't been issued, there's a basic principle of ministerial responsibility. Ministers are in office and have responsibility, including around foreign interference. The national security agencies are empowered to work with the minister who's in office. This was very much and deliberately designed to be something that would be in effect during a caretaker period. It's a convention of British parliamentary democracy where the government is in itself a candidate to succeed itself. So in a government's act with a great deal of restraint during a writ period, as is absolutely appropriate, that's why the panel and the protocol was deliberately designed to exist at a period where the elected government perhaps shouldn't be the best arbiter of public pronouncements on the conduct of an election.
All right, let me turn to a next topic, which is to ask you about whether and when you received classified intelligence in your capacity as Minister of Intergovernmental Affairs and with responsibilities for democratic institutions. Do I understand that that would, it would be rare for you to receive classified intelligence or classified briefings?
Yes, the Minister of Democratic Institutions is not a regular consumer of intelligence products or intelligence documents or briefings from intelligence officials. And I've had a perspective on that since I became the Minister of Public Safety last summer. I now see the difference between the operational responsibility of a minister responsible for CSIS or the RCMP and a minister responsible for democratic institutions. The democratic institutions portfolio, I did receive high-level briefings from officials on a number of occasions. I think the first one was in March of 2020. I think literally on the eve of the declaration of the pandemic, I, one tends to remember those moments. But it was a high-level situational awareness of the threat landscape. It was my first opportunity to hear from them how, what they had seen in terms of threat actors and potential attempts to interfere in the election of 2019. But it didn't, it was to situate my understanding of the threat landscape of the, of the particular state or non-state actors that are active in this space. But it didn't go into granularity around specific constituencies or specific events. It was a higher-level briefing, probably so as, in your reference of the Judd Report and other work that we would do, as we were thinking through how we wanted to adjust the protocol and the Protecting Democracy Plan for the subsequent election. This was a sort of introduction for me to the threat landscape. That was an intelligence briefing, but it was at a much higher level than, for example, the Public Safety Minister would typically receive.
All right, we'll go through that briefing in just a moment. But we heard from Minister Gould this morning that in developing the plan to protect democracy, she had sort of monthly meetings, she estimated, with CSIS, CSE, the Privy Council Office, received information from RRM. I understand you did not receive, and those were, to be clear, sort of high-level, as you've described, briefings, not sort of specific incidents or specific geographical areas or things of that sort. I understand you did not have sort of these regular monthly briefing sessions. Can you explain the difference in approach?
It's probably three explanations. The first one is, in September of 2019, I had a stem cell transplant to deal with a very aggressive and rare form of blood cancer. So when I became Minister, I was literally, I came from Montreal and went back to Montreal the same day. So I was recovering in terms of my own health. The assessment was that the plan that Karina had put in place had worked. The initial information was that it had been successful. We recognized that we needed to adjust or tweak or take into account recommendations from the National Security and Intelligence Committee of Parliamentarians, or Mr. Judd. So that was less of an undertaking than building a plan from scratch. Before Karina Gould had put together the Protecting Democracy Plan, nothing of the sort had existed. So she built the infrastructure from scratch. It was the first time the federal government had set up these mechanisms to detect and disrupt foreign interference, the public protocol. So these were all new elements. We were satisfied generally with how they had worked. We recognized that we had committed to reviewing and adjusting them, which is what I did. And then along came COVID as well. COVID literally happened, I think, the day, the pandemic was the day after my first briefing. Like many Canadians, I returned to New Brunswick. My health was still fragile, recovering from the transplant. And we were building the communications infrastructure as a government to allow ministers to receive classified information from residences. So that quickly changed, and by the fall, everybody was in a much different routine. But the need for the monthly briefings or to travel to California to meet the social media companies was much different after she had, in our view, successfully done that work.
All right, let's turn to that March 2020 briefing. If the court operator could pull up CAN15506. This is a memo, the memo is dated March 9th, 2020. It is a memorandum to the National Security and Intelligence Advisor, and I understand represents the notes for the NSIA for a security briefing to you in your capacity as President of the Queen's Privy Council Office. And we heard some evidence yesterday that briefing notes are not always strictly, strictly applied to. So I just want to go through this document and understand what topics were or were not covered in that briefing. If we look at the summary on the first page, it indicates that the purpose of the meeting would be to provide you with a summary of election security-related activities undertaken to help safeguard the 2019 election, as well as an overview of the threat environment, particularly as it pertains to foreign interference. Does that accord with your memory of the purpose of the briefing?
Yes, it does.
And the summary also indicates in the third bullet point that the December mandate letter that you had received specified that you are to lead a review of the measures put in place to protect the electoral process and bring forward recommendations. Excuse me, and does that accord with your memory of the December mandate letter that you had received?
Yes, it does.
All right, and then in the bullet point below that indicates that Ms. Bruce, who I understood was then the head of the CSE and Mr. Vigneault, the Director of CSIS, would expand upon potential threats observed in GE 2019. Do you remember whether Ms. Bruce and, Ms. Bruce and Mr. Vigneault were at the briefing and provided you, and did they provide you with some information on the potential threats observed during the 2019 election?
Yes, they did.
Okay. If we go to page three of that document, just scrolling to the bottom of the page, there's a text box there indicating there is some discussion of a threat reduction measure that the Government of Canada had conducted in advance of the 2019 election. Do you recall receiving information about that, about that TRM in this meeting?
I don't recall details of that, a discussion around threat reduction measures, or I see that it references the Government of Pakistan. I don't have a specific recollection of a conversation about CSIS threat reduction measures.
All right. And then if we go to page eight of the document, if we scroll just a little bit further down, there's a title indicating what we saw. And the bullets indicate that we did not observe any activities. And I presume, sorry, I should, just to put this in context, there's a discussion above about the Site Task Force and the Panel of Five's work. So I am assuming, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, that this, when the "we" addressed here is the panel. We did not observe any activities that met the threshold for a public announcement or affected Canada's ability to have a free and fair election, including in the online space. Is that something that you recall being briefed on in this meeting?
Yes, I do, and as I, that was one of the most significant takeaways for me from that sort of first high-level briefing is that some of the most senior intelligence and security officials in the country confirmed to me their view that the 2019 election was free and fair and that any attempts at foreign interference would not have affected the outcome of the election, including in specific, in individual writing. So I remember being reassured that the plan that we had put in place in their view, in their independent senior official view, had been successful.
And the next bullet point down, do you recall that being said as well? That is not the same as saying we saw nothing at all.
Yes, that's why I said the idea that there have been attempts or is not new. This had existed for over a decade. And they would talk about that sort of overall threat landscape. But the takeaway for me, I thought, was significant, your first bullet, that the election had been free and fair and decided by Canadians in Canada.
Turning to page 10 of this document, we see a heading labeled China Threat Update, and there are a number of largely redacted bullets. The third down, third bullet down is bolded and says, "Specific incidents suggestive of foreign interference, which were briefed to relevant clients, Government of Canada and political parties during the writ period, e.g. Don Valley." Do you recall being briefed on anything specifically related to Don Valley?
Comme j'ai dit, puis derrière la première fois. As I said, and the first time that I saw this document was when I was preparing for these hearings. So as a minister who receives a briefing from the officials, I don't see the notes that they've prepared by their colleagues for the meeting. So the first time that I knew that they had such notes, it was honestly when I was preparing for this hearing and when I looked at your documents. So I think I also understand that this section here, it was, for example, if you need any other information, it would be a supplement to the main document. And as I said, my impression was that they wanted to give me a broader perspective with respect to the threat context. But I do not remember at all that we went into such precise details for given writing and that a specific country had done something, was alleged to have done something in a writing. So the first time that I did hear about the allegations with respect to this writing was when it was public, following the leaks, and that last year it came out.
Next questions you may be able to answer quite quickly, if, given that you've indicated it was really more high-level or global-type briefings. I'm turning away specifically from this document. Can I ask you whether, I'll ask the court operator to pull up sum three. Minister, there was a number of summaries produced for the purposes of this Commission on various issues relating to the 2019 and 2021 elections. And I'll just ask you very briefly to indicate whether or not you were aware of intelligence relating to these various issues at the time of the 2019 and then 2021 election. So this first one relates to potential interference in the Vancouver area and specifically the use of, paragraph three, the use of proxy agents to exclude candidates from community events. Was this the type of intelligence that you would have been briefed on in 2020 or after the, sometime after the 2019 election?
Yeah, and in your introduction, you said like before the 2019 election. So I would not have had even this level of detail before the 2019 election when I became Minister responsible for democratic institutions. So after the 2019 election, provide the briefings. It was, certainly they were focusing on China as one of the most frequent countries in terms of attempting to interfere. I don't remember details of local community events in the city of Vancouver. Again, I, the first time I saw these summaries was preparing for this hearing. And there are a long list of caveats that you can't figure out. From this summary, we don't know at what particular moment this intelligence information was gathered. We don't have the context of other pieces of information. We're not sure if it's a single source, if it was corroborated. So I want to be careful not to comment on these specific things other than having looked at the summaries before my appearance today.
I understand, and I don't want to ask you about the substance of any of the intelligence. I'm really just looking or seeking to understand whether these are, you would have been briefed on these issues in your capacity as having responsibilities for democratic institutions?
So they would have, for example, talked about proxy agents. And that is one of the ways that different hostile actors attempt to interfere. I would have understood that China was very present in that kind of activity. But I, was it in the city of Vancouver and was somebody kept out of a community event? That I would not have known.
Understood, and if we could bring up sum dot ten, please? This is a summary, Minister, in relation to PRC threat actors, contact with candidates, and funding of threat actors. It mentions 11 candidates, 13 political staff, and a transfer of $250,000. Were you briefed in relation, or did you, had you been briefed in relation to these, to this body of intelligence in your capacity as responsible for democratic institutions?
So again, I, I wouldn't comment on specific allegations. In this case, I learned about this when it became public following some leaks. So I would not have been briefed in this level of granularity. But as I say, I, I also think it's important that people not think we are confirming stuff that appeared in particular leaks that, of intelligence information. I think it just merits saying that I took note of the public discussion of these issues.
Right, and turning to 2021 now, I'll ask the court operator to bring up sum four. And this is a summary, Minister, that describes some of the allegations of misinformation or a disinformation campaign targeting Aaron O'Toole, Kenny Chu, and the Conservative Party of Canada. And I want to ask whether in the months or weeks after the 2021 election, were you aware of, were you aware of the intelligence summarized in this summary?
Again, I knew that China used social media platforms, and particularly WeChat, to propagate campaigns of disinformation and misinformation. But the first time I learned about the specific allegations, either with respect to Mr. O'Toole or Mr. Chu, was following, again, the public release of this information. And then there were subsequent meetings in the fall of 2022, I think, and certainly in the spring of 2023, where we were taken into some more detail, a small group of ministers.
Right, and so turning then to those, we'll jump ahead then to those briefings. And I'll take you specifically to one that was held in May of 2023, and that's CAN17676. If you can scroll to the second page, please? These are, I realize these are not your notes, Minister.
But Brian Clow has pretty good handwriting.
He does, indeed. So we heard some evidence from Mr. Clow yesterday that these were notes that he made during a briefing on May 18th. And I understand that you were, your name is listed at the top, and I understand you were at this briefing?
I was.
All right, and the document or the notes refer to some expressions of partisan preferences, shifting, wanting to punish. I'm looking at the first, sorry, in the middle of the page, under Discussion of Media Leaks. There's PRC, no threats of physical harm to MPs or families. The next line down, PRC wanted to punish LPC, shift to CPC, and some further discussion of shifting back to LPC. Was this the first time you have been briefed on intelligence relating to shifting partisan preferences expressed by the PRC?
Yes, it was. That was the first time I would have heard that level of granularity. I remember being quite skeptical that an intelligence briefing would be able to discern the shifting preferences of a country in another country's election. the shifting preferences of a country in another country's election. I've been in enough elections where a lot of people claim to have influence or to be involved in either a successful or an unsuccessful election and having played a critical role where in some cases it's exaggerated. So that's part of a free and open democratic discussion. But I do remember the officials offering up that piece of intelligence at that meeting.
All right. And there's also, I see a note towards the bottom of the screen right now, FI in DVN 2019 nomination. Is this the first time you would have heard at that sort of granular level about particular intelligence relating to the nomination process in 2019 in DVN?
Yes, I think it was.
Okay. And at the bottom of the screen now, there's reference to the 11 candidates and a reference to $250,000. Is, again, this is the first time you would have heard with that level of granularity about that allegation?
Yes, it was.
All right. And scrolling to the next page, the second unredacted line there, disinformation campaigns did exist, can't conclude direct impact on certain results. And above that, there is a list of various media outlets. Is this the first time you would have heard about intelligence relating to disinformation campaign in 2021?
I don't disagree with Brian's notes. I think there was a meeting in February, in the winter of that same year. I don't have those notes in front of me, and I just want to make sure I don't say, yeah, that was the first time. And then there's a note referencing, this was the first time that I remember hearing about writings, allegations around money exchanging. Disinformation campaigns and China using social media platforms was something that we'd heard a lot about for a considerable amount of time. But this may have been the first time when they went into detail of the targets, the particular elements of the disinformation that was used.
Thank you. And I don't mean to suggest it was, you may well have heard about this at an earlier briefing, but it was well after 2021. It would have only been after various media leaks. Is that fair to say?
Yes, yes. This level of granularity started after some of these allegations were in the public domain.
Thank you. And would, just to conclude, would having knowledge of this type of information, this level of granularity, had, would it have benefited your review of the implementation of the Plan to Protect Democracy in 2019 and your efforts to update that plan that you spoke about earlier for 2021? Would having this level of information about the nature and extent of threats of foreign interference have benefited your efforts in reviewing and developing the Plan 2.0, as you put it?
I'm not sure that this level of granularity would have made a significant difference. The senior officials at the Privy Council Office who worked with me talked to their colleagues in the Intelligence Secretary at a Privy Council Office, and I assume with national security agencies. I certainly believed in the discussions I had with them. They gave me a sufficiently precise picture of the threat landscape, of the countries that were active in the particular foreign interference space, and the measures that we wanted to be put in, to be adjusted or tweaked following Mr. Judd's report or the National Security and Intelligence Committee of parliamentarians, were validated by the fact that we had Mr. Judd and the members of the panel themselves confirming that in their views, the measures that had been in place had worked, had been successful. So I had every confidence that I had all of the information I needed, and my colleagues at Privy Council Office, the senior officials that helped me go to Cabinet with the adjusted version of the plan, were well aware of what we needed to, to ask Cabinet to make the changes, largely based on Mr. Judd's review. And Mr. Judd would have had all of this granularity. So I had very much confidence in his experience in this area. He had a long and distinguished experience in this area, and I was told that he had been taken through all of this detail. I was satisfied to rely on his advice and the advice of the deputy ministers at Privy Council Office when we went to Cabinet for the amended or the adjusted plan.
Those are all my questions, Commissioner.
Thank you. We'll break for lunch, and we'll come back at 2:20.
Order, please. Alors, s'il vous plaît. This hearing is in recess until 2:20. La séance est en pause jusqu'à 14 heures veille. The sitting of the Foreign Interference Commission is...
...a rebri.
Well, we just resumed, but I forgot my notes.
Before we start the cross-examination, I just want to specify one thing. The questions that have been asked of and the answer that have been given by Minister Blair regarding the media report concerning the CSIS warrant were outside the scope of this stage of the commission work, and no findings will be made on these matters in the initial report. Cross-examination. First one is Jenny, counsel for Jenny Kwan.
Commissioner LeBlanc, my name is Sujit Choudhury. I'm counsel for Jenny Kwan, MP for Vancouver East.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon. I just have five minutes, so a couple of quick questions. The first is, you've probably seen reports about the CSIS Director's talking points that we examined yesterday with the PMO panel. I just have a question about those, a quick one. That are dated February 21st, 2023. Ends, it's CAN 4495. And to... Ever received a briefing from the Director? And maybe if it would help... And in particular, it's on pages five and six. There's some conclusions, if you can scroll down. Yeah, so there's three conclusions listed on page five. And then there's two conclusions on page six. And we're just wondering if you ever received a briefing from the Director that covered those five points?
Well, then, if you want me to speak to all five of them, let's go back to the first three, if I could go back up to the first three.
Sure, of course, sir.
Because you'll appreciate, the first time I saw this document was when I was preparing for these.
Of course, sir, yes.
And I was not in that briefing that the Prime Minister would have had. Okay, can I see the last two again?
Sure, of course. Thank you.
And your question again?
So my question is, did you ever receive a briefing from the CSIS Director that addressed any of those five points or communicated those five points?
Not in that context at all. My first briefing with the CSIS Director as Minister of Democratic Institutions, level sort of analysis of the threat landscape. Since I became Minister of Public Safety, I talked to the Director of CSIS about these issues with more precision than the Minister of Democratic Institutions at the time. He talks to me about things that... We've always said that the threat evolves, that the kind of, the nature of the threat and the particular ways that hostile state or non-state actors attempt to interfere evolve. And he talks to me about what CSIS is doing to keep up with the evolving threat. So that would be the context of my conversations with him.
Okay, thank you. Well, that's actually a good segue to my next question, which is, so Metra Druan was here testifying in her capacity, her most recent role as NSIA, and she offered an observation at the end of her cross-examination with me. She said that, you know, it's been two years, two and a half years since 2021, there's, and our understanding of foreign interference continues to evolve as to the kind of threat it might pose today, as to what it might have posed in 2021, let alone in 2019. And so the, and I know that you've been working on, you've issued a report with Madame Charette about steps forward, and so I'm hoping I can ask you a couple of questions on that theme of what our current understanding of foreign interference is and what, how we might respond today. And so the first is a question that's been put to other members of the government, but we'll put to you as well. And if we could call up now, it's in the document database. And is... Yes, that's it. Thank you. So... Threat levels chart. And so the question... Which is a high threshold and a single threshold, this, in the counterterrorism context, we use a spectrum and with kind of a graduated set of responses. And so is this type of framework an alternative to the high single threshold model that would be used for foreign interference? Is it something we should consider or look at carefully?
So, and I, my colleague Karina Gould would have talked about that this morning when she was the Minister of Democratic Institutions and brought forward the first Protecting Democracy Plan, which had the public protocol. The threshold is deliberately set at a high level. It's an extraordinary moment in the middle of an election campaign where a group of five senior public servants chaired by the Secretary to the Cabinet, the most senior nonpartisan public servant in the country, a potential threat of foreign interference that in their... The ability of Canadians to have a free and fair election, including... So the threshold has to... You deliberately want a robust public discourse. Moments in a country's democratic evolution, and that's positive. You want to encourage robust debate, and having weekly comment from a panel of the most senior public servants or regular commentary would be an extraordinary moment, and done at anything less than a high threshold, in our view, might undermine confidence in the election. So that's why it's deliberately set that high, and that's why I don't think a comparison to a terrorism threat level is a valid comparison. During the election campaign, the national security agencies are still very much, according to law, doing their job at detecting and disrupting foreign interference. You're going to the ultimate instrument of a public declaration by the panel of five. I think it's important to know that the work is being done on a regular and effective basis throughout the election period and obviously before the election as well.
So one follow-up question, Minister, because, sorry.
That's what it's going to do, that last one.
Yes, of course. So just to put this back to you, it could be that at the critical level, there is a public announcement by the panel of five, but beneath that, there's different types of communications that might not be of that character to parties, to candidates, to different entities. So there is a, there's a more complicated, a more complex set of two... Protocol that might evolve in response to the...
And the question is?
And so... Then kind of the all or nothing approach where it's a... Five, where there's communications to parties, to candidates, to affected communities that maybe don't have the same...
Well, I think you, as I said, you want to be careful in an electoral context before Public context. You know that there's a security cleared representatives of each political party that can meet with representatives of the intelligence and security community. Elections, Canada has access to these officials as well. I don't think that you can, I don't think that you can have a spectrum of public comment. It either reaches the threshold wherein the independent professional judgment of these five senior officials, they are required to inform the public because in their judgment, our ability to conduct a free and fair election in a riding or nationally is affected. I don't think you take steps along that road. It's a nest, candidates respond to allegations, candidates disagree with other candidates. Hosts, that's part of a normal, robust democratic discussion. And having intelligence services or senior public officials commenting in a public way in an election, in our view, has to be because in their independent judgment during the caretaker period, they think that something has happened that impedes the ability of Canadians to have a free and fair election. And it's important to note that in 2019 and 2021, in their judgment, they did not think that was the case.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, Minister. My name is Tom Jarman. I represent Aaron O'Toole. I've just got a couple of questions. During the period from... You are serving your duties as Minister of Democratic... Intelligence precincts you received were high-level as opposed to...
Yeah, they were high-level. There was discussions of different state, hostile state and non-state actors that were active in this space, but it didn't go down into details around specific writings or specific geographical regions.
Okay, thank you. And this morning, when Minister Gould testified, she talked about the relationship she developed with Facebook, Twitter, and Microsoft, and I guess Google as well, in order to come to this voluntary protocol with respect to the 2019 election. Was that reviewed after the 2019 election?
Yes, it was reviewed by the National Security and Intelligence Committee of parliamentarians and by Mr. Judd. In his review, the voluntary undertaking that Ms. Gould got from the major social media platforms was reviewed, and in fact, in 2021, we also added others to that space.
Yes. And what steps were taken to add foreign enterprises like Tencent and ByteDance who are...
Judd did and the National Security and Intelligence. Judd did and the National Security and Intelligence recognized that there was a threat of dis... Some foreign state and non-state actors were particularly active. That is a process in a moment where social media has taken on such significant importance and has such a significant impact. But of the site task force and others with the social media platforms. Or period where the government is in ones that would have those conversations in the...
Tencent been asked to enter into the same relationships with, as Facebook, Twitter, Microsoft and Google.
I want to be careful before getting in. I'd want to, I don't want to talk about specific discussions that may have happened with intelligence officials who are the ones that are best placed to give this advice to the government. But we have participated, for example, in a G7 effort, the rapid response mechanism. Canada was a global leader in this space. There was the Paris call for trust and democracy, where I participated quickly or soon after becoming Democratic Institutions Minister with other countries. It's a live conversation with our Five Eyes partners about what we can do in terms of sharing information around different... A complicated space. You'll appreciate that it's not easy for one country to in this area. That's why the most ended countries. And there's increasingly an G7 partners to work in this space together. We took our responsibility to do everything that we could. And I would think that certainly the work that Ms. Gould did told us that the major social media platforms want to ensure that they're not participating in activities or being used in a way that disinformation or misinformation campaigns could affect negatively the outcome of an election. But it's a constant challenge for democratic governments around the world. And it's an active conversation that I've had with counterparts in other countries as well.
Great. That's my time. Thank you, Minister.
Thank you. Next one is Council for RCDIA, Metzervan.
Bonjour.
Bonjour. Minister LeBlanc, vous avez été impliqué dans le développement du mandat de la présidente de commission, n'est-ce pas?
Oui.
You were involved in the mandate of this commission, Mr. LeBlanc. So the commission was set up with great care. Could you repeat your question, please? Question. Each word was picked with great caution. We all agreed with each word in the terms of reference and the mandate you just quoted.
The Commission to investigate foreign interference by China, among other state actors. So so is the government aware of similar allegations when Russia interfered with the 43rd and 42nd? I will not comment on publications, on allegations in the public domain about allegations of particular intelligence. It is known in the public domain that Russia is particularly involved in disinformation and misinformation campaigns in other contexts and in cyber attacks. I am referring to what is in the public domain. And earlier, in other countries, we saw allegations of Russians' involvement in such threats. But I will not comment on the specifics of Russian interference. But I will say, as it was, as we said publicly, that Russia was quite active in other circumstances. And we wanted to make sure that all appropriate measures of protections were available in Canada. Question. There are other worrying why we don't just mention China. General elections. And so I didn't say that Russia didn't get involved. I said that it is that Russia is interfering through misinformation and disinformation campaigns in other countries in the public domain. There were allegations concerning Russia, concerning cyber attacks. When I spoke parliamentary leaders of the three major political year ago in the spring, people spoke about China and Russia. There are other countries. We saw allegations regarding India. I remember at some point in the conversation, it was, I believe, in the month of August, when we were finalizing the terms of reference. We concluded among ourselves that we wanted to give the Commission the ability to lead the evidence. We used the terms of other state and non-state actors because we want the Commission to be able to establish the evidence and to come to its find, and to come to some findings, questions. So the Commission was created to make sure that nothing was missed by the government in terms of Russian involvement in the last two general elections. And so we're always seeking recommendations in order to reinforce the already robust measures that we have put in place and which were appropriate during the say that it applies particularly to Russia. I am looking for action regarding several countries, some findings which deserve to be looked into and reviewed. Talking about where the Commission is going to go in its findings. But among the four major parties, we agreed that Russia was in, and China were involved, but they are not the only countries. And we will not comment on specific incidents of a particular country. The Commission, of course, has access to all information and all evidence. But I would like to be careful in the public domain. My last question. So we did mention Russia to make sure that Russia would be investigated by the Commission. Reply. We recognize that Russia is active, particularly in terms of potential cyber attacks and disinformation and misinformation. And the four political parties decided to use two examples of countries which were discussed a lot in the public domain. But we wanted the Commission, for the Commission to have access to all classified information, to all documents. And with senior officials who were able to brief the Commission. So in its finding, we wanted the Commission to be able to lead the evidence. Thank you. Conservative Party.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
In front of you, Minister LeBlanc. This is a news report from CTV News published June 2, 2023. And at the top page two, the top of page two, it says Affairs Minister Dominic LeBlanc is leading a process to determine independent MP Handong's possible return to the Liberal Caucus. Do you see that? 2023, you are leading a process to determine...
Commissioner, if I could explain how this is relevant to parts A and B in your mandate?
Well, we've been, sure, we've been through this before. There's considerable controversy about Mr. Dong's participation, willing or not, in foreign interference. And there's conflicting reports as to what he did or didn't do and what he said or didn't say. And whether that gave rise to, for lack of a better term, discipline or him being forced from Liberal Caucus. So I'm asking this witness whether that in fact happened and whether in light of, I'll come to the questions, in light of the special rapporteur's conclusions, that decision to be excluded from caucus has been reconsidered at all.
And tell me, what is the relationship with A and B of the terms of reference? Because I can mandate of the Commission, but we are just...
Part of, part of phase one is to understand
I'm disciplined, but I think three or 2024 is time being. So.
Said publicly in the House of Commons that he voluntarily decided to withdraw from the Liberal Caucus when the allegations became public. He stood up one evening in the House of Commons and voluntarily withdrew from the Liberal Caucus and asked the Speaker to sit as an independent. That was the decision that Mr. Dong made when these allegations became public. And that is on the public record. Those were his words.
Okay. Mr. Dong has also said since that he would like to rejoin caucus and that he's had discussions with you about the possibility of rejoining caucus. Is that correct?
I think now you're pressing the line. It goes beyond the scope of the, the, this space.
Okay. So I'll just put the questions on the record. I appreciate your ruling. And if it's correct that Mr. Dong has requested to rejoin caucus and that has not yet been acceded to that request, I'd like to know why. And so that's the next question. I accept your ruling, Madam Commissioner. And I'd just like to put on the record the documents that speak to these questions that I intended to ask Minister LeBlanc. It's COM 3044, 30, sorry, COM 344, 345, 346 and 347.
So it's noted. Thank you.
Those are my questions. Thank you.
Madam Commissioner, we have no questions for this witness. Thank you.
No questions. Thank you.
Human Rights Coalition?
Good afternoon.
Bonjour.
Can we please pull up Act 15 and turn to page four? This is going to be the institutional report prepared by Public Safety Canada. And the final bullet point on page four reads, "The Public Safety Minister is responsible for most of the federal agencies operating in the areas of national security, policing and law enforcement, border services and corrections, and conditional release, namely the RCMP, CSIS, CBSA, CSC and PBC. The minister's role is to coordinate their activities and establish strategic priorities relating to public safety and emergency preparedness." Is this correct?
Yes.
Is it a strategic priority to protect diaspora communities?
It's always been a priority, not just of the Public Safety Department, but of the whole government. As I learned about the prevalence of foreign interference, we were always struck that diaspora communities are, in many cases, the targets and the victims of these foreign interference attempts. So it's, the Public Safety Department is absolutely seized with that, as would be, for example, CSIS and other agencies. But the whole government is concerned about this. My colleague, the Minister of Diversity and Inclusion, talks to me just my department, but the Public Safety Department is absolutely concerned about this. But it
And if I could ask the court operator to please pull up CAN 2096? And as it's being pulled up, Minister, I understand this was an election security brief the first page at the third bullet point. It's under the heading slide...
Sorry, do we know the date of that? Okay.
So just under slide two, it reads, "A 2016 public threat report from the communications security establishment, CSE, identified political parties and politicians, electoral activities, and the media as vulnerable to threats, but also noted that our system has inherent strengths built in. For example, paper-based ballots cannot be hacked." Would you agree with this statement?
I think our system has a lot of inherent strengths. One of them is paper-based ballots. That's probably in the context of cyber attacks that my discussions with Elections Canada or the security agencies have always been around the risk, obviously, of a cyber attack in the case of paper ballots. It's a lot easier to maintain public confidence in, in the election machinery and in the outcome. I don't remember that before me, if it was my then deputy Minister Ian McCowen, who was a Deputy Secretary at Privy Council Office. These were ongoing conversations that I would have had with him over a number of meetings or briefings.
And so you said that it would be one of many tools in an arsenal to address the issue. And with that in mind, you would agree that a paper-based ballot doesn't make an elector any less vulnerable to intimidation or harassment, which is why there needs to be other mechanisms.
Yeah, that's a fair statement.
Thank you, Mr.
Hey, G.
I have no questions. Thank you.
Reexamination?
No, thank you.
J'ai une question pour vous.
I have a question for you, Mr. LeBlanc. You indicated during the chief examination that you learned about allegations about Mr. O'Toole only when the information was made public in 2022. And also, when you addressed another question, you said that it would not really have been useful to you when you undertook to...
useful to you when you undertook to assess to what extent the measures which were put in place had been sufficient or had been efficient. Could you indicate if in your role as a minister, this type of information would have been useful to you? At the same time. When such information was identified? Question. Are you speaking as a minister of democratic institutions? Reply. Yes, as a minister of democratic institutions. And then you can speak as a minister of public safety. Reply. I'm quite comfortable about the fact that my discussions with B C U officials and my private discussions gave me sufficient information how we needed to evolve our measures between the 2019 and 2021 election. For example, I was aware that there were hostile actors. Or media platforms that were using proxies for intimidation purposes. At the time, I had no operational responsibilities to follow up in the case of X and Y person or X and Y country, because this would have been in the hands of my colleague who was in charge of public safety. This would have been less left to intelligence organizations. So in my general discussions with senior officials, I was convinced that I had enough information to assess a plan to protect democratic institutions. I didn't necessarily need to know that it was ex-candidate or citywide which were involved. It was about asking and being ready. C M P, the Privy Council. Had sufficient information to. It was just because of. As Minister for Democratic. I took on responsibilities as. Been before the role of the minister for public safety in terms of approving. By intelligence agencies, the questions of the mandate of. Sometimes they will inform the minister of a threat. The public safety minister, but I think it would not have been appropriate to be aware of such details as Minister for Democratic. Both hats. A question. And as a public safety minister, do you expect to be made aware of such allegations? Answer. Yes, absolutely. And I can assure you that in my discussions with Mr. Vignoux or his colleagues, it is a kind of discussions that they have very freely with me. I am quite well informed on such issues. And if they deem it appropriate or when they need my approval or they are obligated to inform me. Sometimes they are required to inform me without necessarily requiring my authorization, but I am very comfortable with such exchanges now. Thank you.
So no reexamination after my question?
Sure, I'll give you a few minutes. We'll give you five minutes, Mr. Monso. Good afternoon, Mr. LeBlanc. Good afternoon. Alain Monso from the Quebecois. We learned through the media as well as by way of different testimony here that the Safeguard Defend Human Rights Coalition in September of 2022 had drawn the attention of 55 Chinese police stations around the world, including three here. And then the R C M P said they had conducted an inquiry on two of these police stations, one in Montreal and another one in Brassard. These two police stations seem to have engaged in interference activities from those locations. So you, the minister at the time. Which minister? The Minister of Public Safety at the time. You mean my predecessor? Yes. So your predecessor mentioned, and this was reported in the media, that the two police stations in question had been closed. They had been shut down indefinitely, and we also learned that illegal activities had been carried out. And this is why those two police stations had been shut down. Can you tell us whether indeed those illegal activities were criminal activities? Mr. Monson, can you please establish the connection you are making? Our mandate is fairly limited in this stage. In fact, you are right. Establishing is that those police. For 2022, as. Police stations were in existence in 2019 or 2021, unless there is evidence to the I want to make sure I understand. I don't want to open a can of worms at this point, which will not be useful in this phase. What you are saying, what we are looking at is foreign interference. Just before or during the 2019 and 2021 elections. And what you are saying is that these Chinese police stations existed before that time. So what connection are you establishing between the 2019 and 2020 elections and their existence? Yes, absolutely. They existed then, and we can presume there was interference because the R C M P shut them down afterwards because of. So your question is, what were those illegal acts? The R C M P would only have interfered in terms of foreign interference if there had been illegal activities. We never learned about those activities. I believe the question is too general. If you can reword the whether, to the knowledge of the minister. The 2019 and 2021 elections, I would allow. As you worded it, exceeds the.
If there were. To this matter, and there is ongoing litigation and relation to this matter, it would not be appropriate. And then my second point is, my friend has not provided any information to found the statements that he is making, that these police stations were in existence early, that they were in 2019. And it's somewhat unfair for the witness to be asked questions on a basis of a hypothetical set of circumstances that he may know nothing about.
But this is the reason why I made clear that it's, as far as Minister LeBlanc knows, he doesn't have to speculate. But if he knows whether some of these alleged activities would have been in relation with the elections, then this question is permitted. But I will not permit that you go very far with this line of questions.
Know about any illegal acts which may have been committed from these two Chinese police Does not determine what is a legal or illegal activity. Or a judge. I believe you, when you quote what the R C M P allegedly said, I would have to look into what the R C M P had in fact stated. I am. About these supposed police stations. I think it is important to use supposed or alleged to qualify those stations, but I don't have any. And as the government, as Government Counselor said, I am not confident enough to answer that, as there may be ongoing investigations. So I'm quite hesitant to answer the question on that particular issue. Thank you. We will now move into break. I know that we are supposed to have a five-minute break, but in fact, it'll be more like 20 minutes, given the fact that witnesses will be changing and that certain security measures will have to be put into place. So I expect to be back in about 20 minutes. Thank you.
This hearing is in recess until 3:25, 3:30.